Good evening and welcome to the municipality of Anchorage zoning board of examiners and appeals. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Vick.
Here.
Mr. Ron.
Here.
Ms. Iker.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Ms. Hickock.
Here.
Mr. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Cars has been excused. Thank you.
Next order of business is approval of minutes. We have minutes from Thursday, August 11th, 2016. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Vick.
Move to approve the minutes.
Ms. Dole, seconds. Is there, are there any, is there any discussion, any corrections? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. And we move on to the consent agenda? Oh, disclosures, I'm sorry. Special order of business executive sessions, disclosures. Are there any disclosures? Mr. Ayers.
Madam Chair, in the case 2016-006, I would ask to be recused. I performed the as-built survey for the petitioner.
Is there any objection to Mr. Ayers not participating in that case? Oh, I'm sorry. Why are you recusing yourself?
I performed the as-built survey for the petitioner that appears in the packet.
Thank you. Now, is there any objection to Mr. Ayers not participating in the case? Seeing none, you are refused from that case. Mr. Ron?
Madam Chair, I was excused at the August 11th board meeting and did not hear case number 2016-0082, and therefore will be recusing myself from a vote on resolution 2016-008. That's agenda item D1A.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. And now, to the consent agenda. Do what? Oh, Stephanie, I mean, Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was similarly not present at the August 11, 2016 meeting, and will not be voting on resolution 2016-008.
Thank you. Sorry. Go home now. Okay. Now, we're at the consent agenda. Which is all the, all the items before the board that do not require a public hearing, treated as one. Does any member wish to remove this item from the, from the agenda? I do. So, we need to discuss it. So, it's no longer on the agenda, and the thing, thing I have to say is that there's a wording error on the second page where it says, "The commission approves the request subject to," should read, "the board approves the request subject to," so there's just a verbiage problem, wording error. So now, what do I do? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the amended resolution? Mr. Ayers, Ms. Dole, seconds. Mr. Ayers?
I was going to move for approval of resolution 2016-008 as amended.
Thank you. And, Ms. Dole, seconds. Is there any objection to approval? Seeing none, the resolution is approved. Don't have any appearance requests, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, which brings us to the public hearings. We have a one case, a variance case. Mr. Ayers is on his way out, but I'm going to talk about the process. So, variance hearings are, the procedure is according to regulation, and the regulation states that the chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The staff will present a brief outline of the variance, and the board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the chair. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance shall be granted. The board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be opened for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. Time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be greened within one minute of the time allowed, then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by board members, the staff, and the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The chair will close the public hearing, and then the matter will rest with the board. Any action by the board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board. The fully constituted board shall include all members of the board, including vacancies not excused for conflict of interest. All eight standards, A through H, must be substantially met to approve a variance. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, "It's a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case," and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Okay. That's how we're going to do it. So, the first case, case 2016-0106, petitioner is Mary, Georgia Mary.
Mary.
Mary. Thank you. Will the staff please describe the sufficiency of notice given in the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On September 22nd, 2016, 205 public hearing notices were sent out to neighboring property owners. As of today, one late comment was received and has been provided to you.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Petitioner requests a variance from AMC 21.06.020 to allow an attached garage with dwelling space above to encroach 1.4 feet into a required five-foot side yard setback within the R1 district. The 1.4-foot encroachment into the required five-foot side yard setback was discovered by a registered land surveyor when surveying for a final as-built upon completion of construction authorized under a building permit, R14-1797 issued by the municipality. An as-built originally certified on November 9th, 1971, and recertified on April 27th, 1993, was submitted by the petitioner to the municipality in their building permit application prior to construction. The provided 1993 as-built showed a garage addition that was constructed in 1982. The petitioner sought to establish non-conforming rights for the 1982 garage addition after construction of the second floor was completed, but was unsuccessful because the second floor addition above the garage intensified the structure's nonconformity. After an analysis of the approval criteria, staff finds that standard A is partially met. The lot is not affected by slopes, streams, wetlands, or other physical or environmental impediments. The lot is similar in size and shape to other adjoining lots. However, the property owner was following guidance from municipal staff when obtaining their building permit. The construction of the addition was done in accordance with the approved plans under building permit, R14-1797. It was confirmed by planning staff that there was no planned or resulting expansion of the garage footprint while the second floor of the residence was being constructed. In terms of standard B, the standard is partially met. While there are no physical circumstances of the land contributing to the need for this variance, the strict application of code would create an undue hardship to, on the owner. The property owner constructed this addition in a responsible manner and obtained the building permit from the municipality. If the variance were not approved, the petitioner would have to demolish and reconstruct a corner of their home at great personal expense. Terms of standard C, the standard is met. The addition was constructed in accordance with the plans and specification provided to the municipality. According to the plans provided by the petitioner prior to construction, as well as before and after photographs of the completed addition, it was determined by planning staff that the expansion of the garage footprint was not intended, nor did it incur, did it occur as a result of the home remodel. Standard D, the standard is met. Given the character, history, and zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear that the granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. Standard E, the standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the zoning district and will meet the intent of the code. Standard F, no, standard is met. No adverse health, no adverse effects to health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality are anticipated if the variance is approved. Standard G, standard is met. It is not applicable to a detached, single-family residence. Standard H, standard is met. This residence is located on a lot that would accommodate expansion of the structure in other directions besides vertical. However, this addition was constructed with no ill intent and in accordance with an approved building permit issued by the municipality. In accordance with municipal code, it requires that all eight standards be substantially met in order for the, the variance to be granted. The department finds that standards A and B are only partially met, but C through H are substantially met. Therefore, staff is required to recommend denial of this variance. If, after a public hearing, the board finds all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the conditions 1 and 2 found on pages 5 and 6 of your staff packet. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, through the chair. Could staff please give a brief overview of the history and current status of the gravel driveway that's referenced in the staff packet? Has that issue been, in fact, remedied?
Yes, through the chair. That situation has been remedied, to my knowledge, and has been planted with turf brass.
Thank you.
Ms. Iker.
Thank you, through the chair. Could you please provide some explanation by what you mean when you say that the second floor addition above the garage intensified the structure's nonconformity?
Yes, through the chair. The way that it's defined in code, any time that you increase the amount of structure that is present within a nonconforming structure, you are intensifying it. So, even though they did not expand the garage footprint because they increased the amount of structure that's present within that encroachment, they're therefore intensifying the structure, and have altered it in a way that it is no longer able to get nonconforming
So, I'm sorry, one more question. So, it's not that the intensity was further into the encroachment area, it's just that they went vertical, and that is the reason why they aren't able to avail themselves of?
Through the chair, that, that is correct. The, the setback requirements are a, a vertical plane. If anything encroaches into there, even if it is above ground, that is still subject to, to setback requirements.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, one more question. Was the recommendation, or was the decision to wait to establish nonconforming rights for the 1982 addition, one that was advised by the staff because they, we didn't appreciate that there wasn't, something that was intensified? Or was it just as a matter of, we're already under construction, we'll just wait until everything's done and then request?
Through the chair, that might be a question that the applicant can, can answer for you, as far as the timeline of how that occurred. I believe the nonconforming determination was sought in lieu of the variance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure the applicant can, can clarify.
Any other questions of the board? Of the staff by the board? Are there any questions of the staff by the applicant? Could you please state your name?
My name is Mary Smirude. My husband, George, and I own the property.
And you have a question for?
I don't have questions. I was just here to answer.
Okay.
So that you can hear me.
Okay. So, we're at the point where you can come forward and, and state your case, please.
Oh, okay. All right. We decided to build a second floor onto our existing one-story home. We were not going to change the imprint of the home on the property. We were just going to go straight up. Our intent was to just simply enhance the home so that we had more room because we were retired and we have kids and that sort of thing. We presented all the drawings, all the, we had an engineer that had years of experience of working in Alaska, and he helped us draw up our designs, get our engineering reports and stuff. We presented that to the city. It went through each of the departments. As it was going through the departments, I said, you know, our as-built doesn't have a figure on this one corner. Is that going to be an issue? And they said, oh, it, it doesn't look like it will be, you know? It's just, you know, a few inches. Usually, that's not a problem. And it was 2014 at the time, and so we just kind of went, okay, and got it all through the city, got the ride away, and they said, okay, well, at the end, when you get all done, we'll want you to have a new as-built that shows that you didn't change the imprint of your lot. And at the time, on the old as-built, there was a building that was encroaching on the back of our lot that we had taken down years before that because we'd been on the property for about 15 years when we built it. And so, we just said, okay, at the end, we'll get an as-built. So, we went in, we were completely done building. We had all of our, we met all the inspections. They all came through. Everything was done. We went to get our final, and they said, oh, you still need that as-built to show that you have not changed the imprint. So, we went ahead. We had Ken Ayers do it because the guy who originally did it retired in probably about 84, I guess. And so, we didn't know where to even come up with any of his old records, and so we had Mr. Ayers' group do it. And they, of course, found the, the actual number on that one missing side, and then that's why, what brought us here. We basically said, oh, okay. Well, we didn't know that was going to happen. We didn't know that there would be an enhancement to our encroachment, and we were, it was all brand-new to us. We were kind of surprised. We knew there was a jut out into the land because it's pretty obvious to some degree, but because there's a slight hill that comes down from our neighbor's lot into ours. It's just probably about two feet or so, but it's enough, when you look at the pictures, you'll see, the snow kind of shows that it's kind of coming down into our lot. It's kind of difficult to actually see, see that there's a jut out, that there's a problem, but it's there. And it's not like we did know, but we didn't see it as a problem when we applied for our, for our permit. And I think that's probably it. Any questions?
Are there any questions of the applicant? By the board?
Could I make myself clear?
Yeah.
All right.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2016-0106? Anyone? Vast number of people. Anyone at all? Okay. Seeing none. You have some time for rebuttal. There really isn't much to rebut, but you still have some extra time if you'd like to take it.
Okay. When they talk about the standards on here, and it says that, you know, it does no extraordinary, no, excuse me, there's no extraordinary physical circumstances. Well, there really isn't extraordinary, but like I was saying, our neighbors have their house sitting normally. Our house comes here. The jut out is actually ahead of their house, which, you know, like, what, five feet could be jutting into the side of a house. There is a hill. It's, like I said, two feet down, and if we were to go in and have to dig down to get this particular portion of our garage out of there, we would be disturbing all the dirt up to where it would be within that, their five-foot limit. We'd be encroaching on their land by then. And so, that would make it extremely difficult for them as, and for us, to have to get through all of that. It just, it really would be kind of endangering, I suppose, to some degree. I don't know to what degree, but it would be a problem for their house and ours if we decided to go in and build, or had to go in and, and dig down and get the foundation out for this garage that was built in 82. And that's the only thing I've really got to say about that one. The other one, uh, this one here, when I was reading in the instructions to answer these questions, it mentioned that if you had a permit, that you basically, this partially met standard, I don't really know. There isn't the, we enjoyed the rights of building our house. When we put in for the permit, we assumed that the people at the city kind of did their job, and they kind of were new, you know, kind of, somebody would come out and look at it, that somebody would just show up and walk around the house and just kind of say, wow, that's kind of close, and maybe take a measurement, you know? We just kind of thought that that was what was going to happen because somebody mentioned to me, and I know, you know, you hear so much when you're in that process of getting everything set up, but I thought somebody mentioned to me that they came out and they looked at the property before they went through and approved and gave you the permit. And I know inspectors were out there. I mean, they were around our house and in our house and all over, inspecting everything. And so, this wasn't something that the city didn't have eyes on. It did, but maybe it wasn't just the right eyes, is all. And I was just kind of shocked that nobody looked at it. I really was. That's my only disappointment in this whole thing. I mean, I thought somebody would come and look before we got our permit. And have, because we could have easily, at that time, changed our design. We could have, you know, made our decision to even not build or to do whatever. I mean, at that point in time, we could have, prior to getting the permit, we could have done anything to straighten it out. That was not our, it wasn't a necessity that we had to build this thing right on top of the garage and everything. I mean, we could have done it a lot of different ways. We're just kind of disappointed that it got to this point. Thank you.
Okay. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No rebuttal, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then, public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Oh, wait a minute.
I have a question for staff.
Whenever you're ready. Okay. But that can be during the discussion?
Sure.
Okay. The matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale?
Let's see if I can do this correctly. In the case of number 2016-0106, I move to approve a variance from AMC 21.06-020. Dimensional standard stable for a five-foot side yard setback and allow a 1.4-foot encroachment, subject to conditions 1 and 2 on page 5 and 6 of the staff packet.
What do you want?
Is that all right?
Yeah. Is there a second? Ms. Hickock, seconds. Mr. Hale, would you please speak to your motion?
Through the chair. Looked through all of the staff comments. I agree that all of the conditions C through H are definitely met from everything that we see. I also believe that B is, is met. It is an undue hardship if, if they have to chop off part of their building to, to fix something that they really didn't cause. And I think A with, is kind of the hinge point for me, the physical circumstances, and to realize that it's the same, they have the same limitations of lot size as all of their neighbors do, so you can't really say it's a physical limitation, except for the fact that it's limited by the constraints of the boundary. And I believe that the petitioner followed all the right steps. They hired the right professionals. They went through the process that they understood, and the process was a flawed one. But I believe that there was no mal-intent, and it wasn't their fault. So, I think that those extenuating circumstances, for me, create a standard that's completely met. So, I think A through H are completely met, and I intend to support my motion.
Thank you. Ms. Hickock?
Can I ask questions, or should I go with the motion, the second?
You've seconded, so you can ask a question if you'd like.
Staff, through the chair. The question I have is in regards to if back in 2014, when they were applying for their application, if it was brought up then, that they should have got nonconforming rights, they would have applied for them. Would they have been granted nonconforming rights and then been able to construct their building?
Through the chair. It's difficult to give a guarantee as to whether or not they'd be able to get nonconforming rights, but they would have been able to seek a nonconforming determination. It's likely that because the structure was built in 1982, prior to 1986, it is likely that they would be able to get nonconforming rights for the garage itself. But thereafter, once they had that nonconforming determination, they would not be allowed to alter the footprint of that garage and, and construct anything within that encroachment.
Mr. Whitfield, do you have anything to say?
Through the chair, Ms. Hickock. Yes, the answer is yes. More than likely, they would have been granted a certificate of nonconforming encroachment. Municipal code says that if a structure is constructed and encroached into a required yard setback prior to January 1 of 1986, it could be granted a certificate of nonconforming encroachment. So, that's to say that it would be grandfathered. However, the, the second-story addition would have to stay out of that setback. So, their second-story addition couldn't be exactly the way that it is today, but they could certainly build it.
So, if I can add something I found. I looked in old code in the nonconformity section, so under 2155040, and in my read of it, it's very similar to new code, but it's a little bit different. No such nonconforming structure may be enlarged or altered in any way that increases its nonconformity, but any structure or portion thereof may be altered to decrease its nonconformity. And then, further, number four in the same subsection, it says, "A residential structure in a residential zone may be enlarged." So, as long as the addition to the structure conforms to all the requirements set forth in, in, in the
Through the chair, Ms. Hickock, you're correct. But what that means, it may be enlarged, so the structure could be enlarged, but not within the setback. And that's exactly the way that that is, has been interpreted in the past.
Okay.
And I, I believe this board has heard other variance cases for vertical encroachments into required yard setbacks, such as going from a flat roof to a pitch roof, things of that sort.
Further question for staff? So, this intensify word was brought up in the last case that we had last two months ago. Do you know if staff has asked any municipal legal advice on what the definition of intensify means?
Through the chair, Ms. Hickock. Yes, we, we are actually working on that, and I think staff believes that the wording in the new Title 21 is probably not the best. We're looking at possibly making an amendment to that to make it more clear for both staff, the public, and the board.
Just because in my, I just looked up definite, the intensify on dictionary.com, and it's acute, strong, or vehement. and it's, um, acute, strong, or vehement, extreme, kind, um, having a degree of high intensity, high degree. And then I read over this code section, this new code section, um, "May decrease its nonconformity or may be altered or enlarged if the alteration does not intensify the nonconformity." And the fact that they were building two R-one standards, so technically, in, in R-one, that they could build to that height, um, one could say that intensify would mean that it's not greater than the, the zoning district or what have you, but that's just a thought. Other than that, I don't have any other questions.
Uh, Ms. Dole.
I appreciate the, the analysis that you've done. Sorry. I, I appreciate the, the analysis you've done. I, I don't have any comments on that. I did have a comment on Mr. Hale's, um, discussion of findings, uh, finding A in particular, um, because he spoke a lot of, that part, standard addresses, uh, physical circumstances of the subject property, and he spoke about the, the process, and appreciate that the homeowners did what they were supposed to do in terms of process. I, I find that's addressed more by, um, standard C going to whether the hardship was, was self-imposed or the circumstances result from the actions of the applicant. I guess with regard to, um, standard A, um, I, or, I wanted to highlight, uh, that there was a hill that was, a slight hill that was mentioned, and also that I believe that in previous port, board decisions, you have taken things such as exist, in certain case, cer, existing structures that limit, um, you know, future building into consideration as a physical circumstance, so I wanted to put that out there for board discussion in terms of my thoughts on, on A, and, and also I believe that those factors, um, affect standard B, which, which goes to the strict application of the code.
Thank you. Is, are there any other, um, discussion? Is there any other discussion? Okay. Please vote. We, we, we required five positive votes, and we have more than that, so the variance is granted. That was the only, uh, public hearing case. Reports? We don't have any reports scheduled. Board member comments?
Should we get Mr. Ayers?
I think he left.
Did he leave? Okay.
Um, board member comments? Mr. Ron.
Madam Chair, I just, uh, would like to say thank you to my fellow board members, both old and new. You may have caught in communications prior to the board meeting that after eight years, I've made the hard decision to give up my board seat to someone with a little more energy and perhaps younger blood than what, uh, what I now have. Uh, I was telling board member Iker that I've been on the board longer than I've been a dad, and I have a seven-year-old, so you can do the math. In addition to that, my wife and I bought a house earlier, uh, this summer in Anchorage, and as we were reading some papers associated with property disclosure, I saw my signature, uh, on a resolution that the board passed in my second year on, on board. So, all that amounting to the fact that I've seen a number of cases come and go, and, uh, look forward to hearing, uh, not directly, but, uh, in a roundabout way about the future successes of this board and those board members that are, that are on it. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Well, we would like to thank you as well, and so, we have this little token of our, our appreciation of your service on the board, and, uh, thank you for working so hard and being here for so long. Too bad we couldn't talk you into the hundred and twenty days. Um, and the reminder that there is no meeting in November. No cases, no meeting. That's it? Oh, motion to adjourn. Mr. Ron, his last act. Ms. Iker, second.
Sim.
Thank you. We are adjourned.